Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Gascoviek.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. First is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer to adopt the agenda. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And the very first item on our agenda then this evening is to proclaim October Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Alexandra House has asked the city council to proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. All proclamations from cities within Anoka County will be displayed at Alexandra House's Hope Fest event on September 25th, 2021, at the City Hall Plaza in Anoka. So this is a proclamation. Whereas the community problem of domestic violence has become a critical public health and welfare concern in Anoka County, and whereas domestic violence is a crime, the commission of which will not be tolerated in Anoka County, and perpetrators of said crime are subject to prosecution and conviction in accordance with the law, and whereas over thousands of women, men, and children have and will continue to access assistance from Alexandra House Incorporated, a domestic violence service provider, and whereas domestic violence will be eliminated through community partnerships of concerned individuals and organizations working together to prevent abuse while at the same time affecting social and legal change, and whereas October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and whereas during National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Anoka County organizations will inform area residents about domestic violence, its prevalence, consequences, and what we as a concerned community can do to eliminate its existence. Now therefore, I, Jerry Cook, mayor of the city of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the city council and citizens of our city, officially proclaim October to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Coon Rapids, proclaimed the 7th day of September, 2021. And I guess I would just call out that date there, that September 25th, that's the date of the Alexandra Houses, Alexandra House's Hope Fest at City Hall in Anoka, and that should be a very nice event. Next item is to approve the minutes of the August 17th meeting.
I'll move approval of the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Carlson. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and those minutes are approved. We have two items on our consent agenda this evening. The first one is item three on this evening's agenda, and that is to accept the resignation of Charter Commission member Maurice McKee and Shalonda Green. Charter Commission member Maurice McKee contacted City Attorney's Office and gave us resignation due to moving out of the city, and we are looking to accept the resignation. On May 18th, council recommended Shalonda Green be appointed as a new Charter Commission member for a four-year term. She didn't sign her oath of office per statute, but the real thing is, we've just learned that Ms. Green has relocated to another state, so it makes sense that she didn't fill out her paperwork. Mr. Brody?
I apologize. It's actually Shalonda Gordon, not Ms. Green. I apologize.
Okay.
I would blame my legal assistant, but actually I was the one.
That was you, Gordon.
So I can't even do that. So I apologize for, to Ms. Gordon especially.
Okay, well, maybe she doesn't get the council meeting in that state, so, but still. So we're looking to accept the resignation of Maurice McKee and recognize the resignation of Shalonda Ship Gordon.
Ship Gordon.
Okay.
Or Dis Gordon.
Got it. So, yes, all right. And then item four, which is the second and last meeting on our consent, or second and last item on our consent agenda, is to accept an easement agreement with Minnesota Corp. Incorporated. At the May 20th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, Copeland Building Corporation, on behalf of Minnesota Corp. Incorporated, received conditional site plan approval for the construction of a 152-unit apartment building to be located at Golden Street and 102nd Avenue. This permanent easement is required to provide for future city maintenance of the sidewalk, as well as provide for plowing and storage of snow adjacent to the sidewalk. The developer will be constructing the sidewalk as part of their project, but because it falls outside of the public right-of-way, an easement is required for future maintenance by the city. So we're looking to accept the permanent easement from Minnesota Corp. Incorporated for the sidewalk adjacent to a proposed 152-unit apartment building to be located at Golden Rod Street and 102nd Avenue, PID 24-31-24-43-0055, and authorize execution of the agreement. I figured it was there, you probably wanted that pinned in there, I didn't know.
Yeah, that narrowed it right down.
And that is our complete consent agenda.
Your honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower, second by Geisler. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the consent agenda is adopted. We are up to old business. Consider the water emergency. Mr. Himmer, there you are.
Mr. Mayor, council, we're looking to affirm, and we actually instituted some additional restrictions. The city's odd-even sprinkling ban expired at the end of August per ordinance. We're recommending to continue that. The Water Board did discuss that and did actually include that. So tonight, we're here to either affirm or shoot down that recommendation to continue the 10 to 6 daily watering ban, as well as the odd-even will continue for the foreseeable future as we head into the fall. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about this.
Mr. Himmer, there's a little bit even more to this than just our water levels. Isn't this to satisfy something from the DNR for drought conditions or something, or...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the state has instituted a state drought plan. Things have improved slightly up north, but it's still in effect. Consistent with that, we have to look at our local water supply plan, which does speak to conservation measures. They're all outlined in ordinance, everything from just watering bans up to really focusing just on domestic water supply and looking at maybe some of our institutional and/or commercial businesses, and looking at holding back some of that. I don't think we're there, I don't think we'll get there. So we're really just trying to comply with our own local water plan, as well as the state's drought plan. We do have significant fluctuations, as you always do, between kind of winter and summer usage. A little bit more significant this year, especially for those shallower groundwaters in particular. But yeah, we're just trying to hold our own. I think spring or fall is here, we're getting some more rain, things are kind of slowing down, hopefully we can stop watering and cutting our own grasses here on our athletic field soon. But I would make the recommendation that we do move forward with this restriction of odd-even continuance, as well as 10 to 6 daily.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'll move approval or affirmation of the continued watering restriction measures specifically extending the odd-even sprinkling ban and the 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. watering ban.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Ray Rower. Any discussion?
If I may, your honor, just quickly. Mr. Himmer, what have you, are you able to see kind of when the usage is most frequent from our citizens, and if so, what are you seeing?
Yes, Councilmember Johnson, we can. You can basically see it on 24 hours a day. One of the trends that's really changed during this is because of the restrictions that are in place during the day, at nighttime when everyone's sleeping, that's usually when our tower elevations start to increase again. However, that's when everyone now wants to turn on their water because they're not allowed to do it. So what we're finding is the overnight consumption and usage is much greater than we've ever experienced before. So while we do get some rebound in the morning, our tower levels are lower typically than they would be when you're waking up, you know, making your breakfast and getting your coffee ready for the day.
Thanks.
Your honor.
We're going to be talking in pictures tonight.
I'm in a new location. Thinking on my feet.
Councilman Ray Rower.
Yeah, I was doing some, looking at, just looking around, doing a little research today, and from what I saw, we're still in a moderate, considered moderate drought here in Anoka County. Does that sound correct?
That's correct.
And northern Minnesota is still an extreme and exceptional drought.
Yes.
And so, and I was also reading that like one massive rainfall doesn't change the situation, that you still have to have multiple rainfall events over a longer period of time to kind of overcome that drought situation. And I just think it's really important that we continue to conserve our water and make sure we get back to a place that we need to be, because we don't want to end up having to have more painful restrictions later. So it's smart to keep these more moderate or even mild restrictions, I would say, in place, and I'm definitely in favor of them.
And I would agree with you that, yeah, you take the slow and easy approach. We're here in the metro area, you got the headwaters to the north. I think of, you know, what's going on in Iowa or St. Louis, or I would say New Orleans, but I guess they got lots of water down there, so.
I think Blaine wants to make sure we're a good backup, too.
That's right. Never let them live that down.
Eventually, people are going to lose that reference, though.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to consider planning case 21-34, consider introduction of ordinances to amend the solar ordinance and the definitions ordinance. And I assume we're getting a presentation here?
Yes.
All right.
That is correct. And let's see if I can pull it up. All right. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, this agenda item is an update to the city's solar energy ordinance in the zoning code. Our current ordinance was adopted in 2014, and since then, technology and best practices have changed, and we have drafted a new ordinance to respond to those changes. So Coon Rapids is now pursuing silver level designation in the National Soul Smart Program. Soul Smart is a program that certifies cities as being solar-ready when they have ordinances and processes in place that support local solar markets. We have seen a steady increase in the number of solar permits that have been applied for over the years, and solar systems are located throughout the city. We now have just under 2 megawatts of solar electricity generation capacity in the city when you add all of the private systems together. So over the last few months, we have had Soul Smart, Planning Commission, Sustainability Commission, and you all provide feedback on the ordinance update process. We have drafted a new ordinance taking all the feedback into account. Our current ordinance allows for solar energy systems as an accessory use. We allow for both roof and ground-mounted systems now. Our new ordinance preserves that and clarifies some conditions related to lot coverage, number of accessory structures, carports, and height. And this ordinance also moves the definitions from the larger zoning code definition section and has them specifically associated with the solar ordinance, as these definitions are not used elsewhere in the zoning code. So this is why you have two ordinances that are being changed in your packet. One is the edits to the solar ordinance, and the other is the edits to the definitions ordinance. The new ordinance also allows for solar energy to be generated commercially. So to that end, we have created a mechanism through which larger-scale solar energy systems could be installed in the city. If a parcel is 20 acres or more in size, they could install a community-scale solar energy system on-site with a conditional use permit. This would allow them to have a ground-mounted system as a principal or accessory use that has a larger footprint and isn't constricted by the size of the structure on the site. And we have outlined screening and ground cover requirements for such a system type, and any system in this category would have to go through the CUP process. With this new category, we wanted to make sure that we are covering our bases for all types of solar development that may be feasible and economically productive within the city. We also see that there are a few parcels within the city where solar might be a good complementary use or principal use, given other land characteristics. We wanted to give property owners that potential option and provide the city with a specific framework under which to have those conversations with property owners. So the map shown here outlines in black some parcels that are larger than 20 acres in size that could be eligible for a CUP for solar in the future if the property owners were interested in that. I also have some visual examples of the types of solar installations that this ordinance will support. So this is an image of a home with a rooftop solar array that we currently allow and will continue to allow. This is a ground-mounted solar array that we currently allow and will continue to. This is an example of a rooftop array that is larger on a commercial building. We currently allow this sort of thing and will continue to allow it as well. This is an image of solar carports in the parking area of a shopping center. Our current ordinance allows carports, but we provide more information on appropriate heights and coverage in the new ordinance. And then we have an example here of carports at the Great River Energy Campus in Maple Grove, a local example. And then here is a visual example of a principal-use solar garden that would be allowed under the new ordinance. The context in this image is a little bit different from the parcels that are available in Coon Rapids, but the scale is somewhat similar, and we would also require more screening than is shown here in this image, but just sort of to give a general idea of scale. And with that overview, I am happy to take any questions that you might have.
All right. Council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I just have a couple little nitty questions. So in the ordinance, there's an 11-602.5 subsection 2 on the height. It talks about how ground-mounted neighborhood-scale solar systems, including solar carports, shall not exceed 15 feet in height when oriented at maximum tilt, and then at solar carports in non-residential districts shall not exceed 20 feet in height. Does that need to have anything about the tilt in it as well? Or is it, to me, when they're back-to-back, it was like, is there a different height? Or should that also say at maximum tilt?
I think the, my sort of read of it is that with the carports, they aren't necessarily tilting, and so the maximum height would just apply to the highest point at whatever fixed setting it's set at. But to erase any misunderstanding, we can definitely add that phrasing in there.
I would just take a look at that, because, you know, some of the carports are flat and some are, do have a tilt, and so I would just wanted to erase any ambiguity there. And then the other question I had was same section, but point 3, where we're saying point 3B, ground-mounted neighborhood-scale solar energy systems shall not count towards accessory structure limitations. And I just want to clarify and make sure that I'm reading that right. So that would be, we have limitations on the quantity of accessory structures, as well as the size, and so those are the two limitations that will not be in play, correct?
Correct. So if you already have a garage and a shed, and you're, you know, you're at the max number of accessory structures you can have, you can add an additional ground-mounted solar energy system to that. And then we regulate the size of ground-mounted solar in this ordinance, and so wouldn't apply the accessory structure size regulations to that.
Okay. And then my last question, this one is maybe more hypothetical, but if I've got a large parcel with a structure, and I put a large solar installation, would it ever flip that the solar installation becomes the primary structure and the other structure that had been there originally becomes the accessory structure?
We have talked about this, definitely, and if you are not doing a community-scale system, if you're sticking with the neighborhood-scale system, we regulate the size of ground-mounted solar based on the footprint of the principal building, so you can only have half the footprint of the principal building in ground-mounted solar, and so that would sort of preserve the principal use as the original structure and maintain the solar as the accessory.
So could I interpret that to mean that if there is a building on the parcel, the building will always be the principal use, and if I add solar, it will always be the secondary use? That the solar will not overtake the principal use from an existing structure?
That, I think, is our interpretation, but if Scott or Grant has an additional comment, I will take it.
So, okay, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, all of a sudden, we couldn't say, oh, I'm going to now pretend that this is the accessory structure and, you know, do something different. So if that's the intent, I'm perfectly fine with all of it. Thank you so much for the clarifications.
Your honor. Councilmember Demmer.
So I had a question about the primary use ones, because that's one that I struggle to imagine a situation where the highest and best use within a city is solar there. So I, you know, I'm glad you showed that example of some of the plots. Just want to clarify that from a planning, you know, so you said it was a conditional use, right?
Correct.
So from a planning standpoint, that would be something that would be reviewed fairly, you know, strictly, that it would only be permitted conditionally if it really was the highest and best use for the parcel, which would probably limit the number of parcels that would be really eligible for that expansion.
I believe that question's pointed, may I...
No, I'm looking one person behind you, probably, but yeah.
Mayor and Councilmember Demmer, I can, I can attempt to answer that. So yes, the, this new category of community-scale solar was really intended to address some of the initial inquiries we had about larger sites in our community, and could we accommodate those? You know, for example, the WCCO tower site is a fairly unique property. That use is probably not going to go away. So as a practical matter, it would be an antenna tower site. Is there anything wrong with potentially WCCO? If they're ever interested in installing solar, would that be something we could consider? So we started thinking about larger sites that have unique characteristics where probably the highest and best use is what it is right now, and it probably can't be developed into something else. So is there other scenarios where solar would also be a compatible use on the property? And so that's why we created this category. It doesn't cover every parcel in the community, and whether a landowner wants to take advantage of it, or it's even feasible, we don't know, but we wanted to create a category that could accommodate at least more than one site, and then create a process, as Olivia described, through a conditional use permit that would provide that level of review that we could apply conditions and conduct a thorough analysis. So we think it's a, we think it's a, it's a, it's a good strategy to try and accommodate solar on a larger scale where it makes sense in our community.
So for example, if you had a place where it wasn't direct access to a highway, but it had poor soils and you couldn't really build anything on it, those are the sort of things you're imagining? Because then I start to wonder, are there situations where the highest and best use and the better use of a piece of land is just to leave it green?
Well, and that, that can, again, this is an option that exists. So whether or not it's economically attractive, whether or not a solar developer would want to develop on a parcel, I think is an entirely separate question. So I think sometimes it's a little hard to answer the highest and best use question in this context. It provides an option for use of a property, but also provides the, I guess, the benefit of energy production, which is something, you know, many years ago, we didn't think of. So, you know, I think in this case, it provides that opportunity, but doesn't necessarily mean that solar would be developed on a specific parcel.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we, we talked through the primary use one, because I think the primary use is sort of the newest big thing, and, you know, wanted to get a few questions out, so thank you.
Councilmember Demmer, I will also add that with your question about leaving things green, there are conditions in the community-scale solar energy system that dictate the type of ground cover that has to be installed on-site to try and make sure that we're capturing all of the environmental co-benefits that are possible with solar energy installations.
Okay.
Your honor.
Okay. Hey, Councilmember Ray Rower, and then Councilmember Johnson.
I just wanted to comment that climate change is our biggest challenge to come for our future, and an opportunity like this with solar, and wind would be another one, but this particular ordinance is solar, it will help with mitigation of carbon dioxide emissions by having that opportunity. We have a number of our residents that have been coming to us, and they want to be able to purchase solar. So this allows, just prevents that, that block that's in place that doesn't allow it to happen right now. So we're, we're just lifting that block, and it doesn't mean that it will happen, it's just lifting that block that's in place. And then also, our neighboring communities, including Blaine, Brooklyn Park, and Ramsey, already have allowed for commercial generation of solar for quite some time, and so we want to allow our residents to have access to that, and haven't really found a drawback for doing so. And then some creative applications and beautiful architectural qualities to this have come into play that I've seen recently to make it look very attractive. From what we saw there, which I'm glad you showed the picture of for the carports, I've seen them on the sides of parking ramps now, shade for over patios, and they actually look like they're meant to be there as part of the structure. And I would also, the last comment I really think is a positive, is that many of our younger generation, when they're looking for housing, they're looking for a community that's a sustainable community, that has these opportunities and has these things as part of their city. So I think it is going to attract people to move to Coon Rapids, so I just see it as a win-win.
Councilmember Johnson.
I think this is great that we're looking at this ordinance, and I'm mindful that it's an introduction. I just want to be sure that you all in staff are satisfied that it doesn't, by the definitional kind of components of it, restrict unwittingly other kinds of development that are coming down the road. I mean, one of the things that jumped out at me, and maybe you've got a direct answer to this, and I just haven't caught it in the ordinance, but is like the roof-mounted stuff, solar energy system mounted on a rack that is fastened to or ballasted on a structure roof. Well, in a lot of the residential and even some of the commercial stuff now that's coming out, whether it be through Tesla or other corporations, the solar's going right into the shingles. It's going to go in, right into windows pretty soon, and things like that. And I want to make sure that that's allowed, and that that's contemplated as being part of what is permitted and permissible within the city, just so that we capture that. And the only other thing that I've been thinking of is if you look at some of the, you know, got to look really out to the desert for some of this stuff, but the massive kinds of solar parks that are out there, they're actually using mirrors to reflect light back to gain additional, you know, energy, if you will, sunlight that's in it. And I guess my only question with respect to that is, and I appreciate the comment on the ground cover, but the only question I have with that is, is there... but the only question I have with that is, is there anything in here to kind of protect neighbors so that they don't have this big beaming light if there is a bigger commercial thing that's there? So I just want to make sure we're thinking of all the angles, but I'm, I'm hopeful that we are.
So Councilmember Johnson, I can respond to your first question about the solar shingles and other building components. We did discuss that and that is encapsulated in the 11-1602.3 section under Building Integrated Solar Energy Systems. So things like solar shingles, solar sunlights, patios, covers where it's just sort of part of the building materials will not be independently permitted as a solar energy system. It will be inspected in the building inspection process there. So that is sort of the umbrella for that category. And then with the sort of mirror and reflectivity issue, if that is a component of those larger sort of community-scale systems, it definitely would be brought up in the conditional use process. And so I think we could have a pretty open discussion with applicants about what we would or would not want to allow with regards to that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Gascoviac.
So I'm, I'm pleased with all the work that's been done here so far. I think it's really taken us where we want to go. Just coincidentally, last week, a neighbor of mine had a big solar ray put in his house. It looks beautiful. I was over there admiring it on a nice sunny day like today, thinking, I think I might want to go this route. Olivia, on one of your slides, you showed neighborhood use and community use. I hadn't seen that before. Would it be possible to go back to that real quick?
Yes.
I just had one question and that's on the community scale there, you see, over 20 acres. It just says ground mount only. I'm just wondering, there are probably some acreages in, in Coon Rapids that are over 20 acres that have a primary building and they might want to put those panels on the roof. Would that be allowed?
Yes. So the community scale is for ground-mounted systems on parcels 20 acres or larger. If you want to put anything on your roof on any parcel size, that is covered under the neighborhood scale system. So if you have a 30-acre parcel and you want to cover your entire building roof, you will be allowed to do so.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, that looks good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson?
I just have one real quick question. This kind of comes off of Councilmember Johnson's question. I was wondering about the screening with the, with the community scale. You know, the, the one photo didn't have any, but what standard for screening?
Yes. So I have it printed out in front of me because I am not as literate, but we have a screening materials and maintenance part of the zoning code. We require a variety of different screening things, including screening fences, planting screens, burns, all of which are sort of part of the discussion with applicants and have various levels of opacity. And in the ordinance where we talk about community scale use, we talk about sort of the levels of opacity in screening and sort of at what setback you have to be screened from based on your level of screening opacity.
Is there a certain height that's standard for screening?
I believe in the ordinance, we say, I, I think it's sort of from view generally, but I'm not, I might not be able to pull it up right now.
It's just a question, so.
Oh, so a screening fence has to be at least six feet in height or of sufficient height to completely block the view of items from surrounding properties.
That's for community?
That is for the screening materials and maintenance section, which would be applied to community scale.
All right, very good. Any other questions for Olivia?
Good job.
All right, very nice. So then in, let's see here, in Planning Case 21-34, we will consider the attached amended solar ordinance, Section 11-1602, and the amended definitions ordinance, Section 11-201, introduced. That work for you, Mr. Brody? All right. Item seven is to consider Planning Case 21-28. Consider a site plan approval for a 12,000-square-foot office building, Holly Street and Springbrook Drive, JHM Coon Rapids Properties. Mr. Harlicker, you want to come up or, all right?
Yes, Mayor and Councilmembers, what's being considered tonight is a site plan along with dementia, or design flexibility for Florida area ratio and the percentage of glass on the facade that faces Springbrook Drive. Property is at the corner of Holly Street and Springbrook Drive. A couple meetings ago, council did approve a plat of this property and essentially split it in two. And this application is for the lot that's on the corner here of Holly Street and Springbrook Drive. Got a quick trip to the north, some office warehouse and medical office buildings over here. This is the site plan of the building. What's being proposed is this two-story, 12,300-square-foot medical office building. They'll utilize the existing shared access that also serves the quick, quick trip convenience store off Springbrook. And they'll be adding a second access off of Holly Street over here. This is the, the parking out front with a stormwater pond back adjacent to Quick Trip. And there'll be sidewalks on both Holly Street and Springbrook Drive. Landscape plan, they meet the landscaping requirements per city code. One of the conditions is that they include some additional evergreen trees here. This is kind of a informal loading area. They don't have any loading docks because they don't require that level of service. But this is where straight trucks would come in and drop off goods, materials. These are the building elevations. As you can see, it's a two-story building. This is the elevation that faces the parking lot. It's a mix of precast and, and brick. This is the front entrance here with a canopy over the front entrance. The similar materials are carried throughout all four sides of the building. And this is a side that faces Springbrook Drive, which is considered the principal street for this project. This is the facade that's triggering the need for design flexibility for 60% glass. They are proposing 33.4% glass. One of the reasons for that is a couple. One is the way the building is constructed and the width of the precast panels, as well as the interior layout of the building with wet restrooms on this side and also the need for privacy for the office buildings, or the office rooms along this side of the building. And this is the canopy that covers the main entrance. And they've got a second canopy that kind of ties in this corner with the main entrance. Again, trying to bring that whole window and material treatment around the building. This is a south elevation, Springbrook Drive. As you can see, it wraps around this corner with the awnings over the windows and then awnings over the secondary, the service stores over here. And then this would be the west elevation facing the adjacent lot. This is the, the door that will be utilized as the loading area. That's where the, the goods and materials be brought in through there or possibly this door here. Again, this is another angled view of the canopy over the drop-off area and main entrance.
With that, I'll answer any questions.
Mr. Harlicker, I can't find it right now, but somewhere they talked about, one of the things that looks like a piece of glass on the front actually isn't glass, but if you factored that in, it would, it would be up to almost 40% or something for glass. Was, I, I'm not finding it right now, but does that sound about right?
Yep, yep. The, Mayor, the, the city code has visibility requirements and tinting requirements for glass to be considered. You've got to be able to see at least four feet into the building for it to be counted towards that 60% requirement. So it, it appears to be glass, but it doesn't meet the strict definition of what's acceptable as glass.
But, but if we did include that, that would bring that up to about almost 40%.
It would increase, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Councilmember Geisler?
This, this is a parcel, and when you look at it with the different ordinances and, or layers or the River Rapids overlay district, you know, which is intended to be Coon Rapids Boulevard. And this parcel is close enough to Coon Rapids Boulevard to be covered within that standard, which is where that 60% glass comes into play. It's not outside of that overlay district, you know? And so looking at that, since it's not quite on the Boulevard, it's not facing the Boulevard and with the fact that it is a medical building where I'm sure people would agree that you don't want to go into a medical examination full of windows. It doesn't quite make sense, right? So, and the other thing with this building is a little unique is because of the shared access off of Springbrook into Quick Trip, the way you would orient that building is actually kind of facing Coon Rapids Boulevard quite a long ways away versus Springbrook Drive. Because if I, if you oriented it that way, then you'd be kind of driving around the building. The whole traffic pattern on that site wouldn't work. So that's part of the reason why we have design flexibility within our code. It's to look at, what does the site look like? How can I put a building there? What are the different things? And where can we agree and have flexibility to make sure the site works for the builder as well as the community and we get what we, what we need? There's also the Florida area ratio, which is part of this, just the size of, of the lot, the parcel that this building is on. So I don't have any problem with either one of the requests for flexibility. I do have one other request though, too, where on the drive where we're looking to potentially add some more trees, I would want to just make sure that we look at sightlines because there needs to be a sight triangle on that corner. So anybody who would be exiting there trying to turn.
Talking not Springbrook or?
Exit, exit onto Holly towards Springbrook.
Yeah.
Because coming on Holly, you can have some large trucks there. And if there's an evergreen there, I don't want to have anybody trying to come out of that that can't see that truck coming. So we want to make sure, and I would be okay if it's maybe, if it was at three or if it goes to two or one, just to ensure that the proper sight triangle is there for that corner. That is, to me, a bigger concern than adding the additional landscape.
And that's something that's taken into consideration when we
Okay.
come up with a final landscape plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Johnson?
So this is, this is my ward and, and I appreciate this design and frankly, I'm excited about this use for this property, which has, has sat there vacant for some time. I'm wondering, Mr. Harlicker, do, do you have any idea of what the percent ratio is on the whole glass thing with the Alina Clinic that's just down the street? It can't be anywhere near 60%.
I, I do not know. But a similar situation did happen several years ago with a building down off Round Lake Boulevard. Again, it was a medical office building.
Right.
Similar situation with the design of the buildings. And they also requested flexibility for that 60% requirement.
And just as Councilmember Geisler said, in light of the use, in light of the location, in light of all of those things, I think this is really a nice project to go into the, the neighborhood. And I would support the flexibility and I'd be excited to see it when they build it. Thank you.
Councilmember Demmer?
Just because I don't ever remember it coming up before, I had a question or two about the FAR. Number one, were they counting it by doing the math on that entire parcel or on the subdivision? Because I, I, I mean, I didn't run the numbers, but just at a glance, it cert, didn't look like it would only be one-tenth of that smaller subdivision.
Yeah, they would, Councilmember Demmer, they, when we did the calculations, it was based on the, the lot that this project is proposed for.
So just the half lot? Just the, the small, small portion? And so the goal of the FAR is to get more building per amount of ground?
Correct.
And so we set that at .6 because we want everything here to be a building that covers most of the ground? I'm, I'm trying to figure out why smaller would be bad here. We don't want like a little crab shack in the middle of this big, big lot. Is that what we're trying to prevent here?
Yeah, Councilmember Demmer, when I, I wasn't here when this was, I don't know if anybody in the office.
We weren't either.
It was here. But I, I think that was intended to create sites that are more kind of an urban nature where you get a taller building, so you get more square footage on that parcel, but then you're going to have underground parking to support that. And that type of situation just never arose in Coon Rapids where they could justify the cost of the taller building and underground parking.
Yeah, so you're looking for a three-story building or something like that to meet that? Because .6, I mean, that's a huge number.
Yes, it is.
Okay. So that, when I saw the gap between the .14 and the .6, I thought, well, we got at least, I mean, it's not even halfway there, but, you know, is there, there's obviously no concern from planning about that number. Is that, is that reasonable for the area? Because I, I mean, just at a glance, I would have assumed it was .3.
Yeah, I, I don't know that there's any building in the city that reaches that level of density per, per square footage.
And then just to be clear, so that we're making sure we're talking about the right things, I always want to make sure we don't get in trouble with the, the assistant lawyer over there, is that, you know, it said that the commission voted to approve the site plan and recommend approval. The commission's actions should have been a recommendation to approve both the site plan and the request. So council is being asked to consider both the site plan and the request. So far, we've only talked about the request for design flexibility. Is there anything you need us to talk about for the site plan?
I mean, it's in, within the memorandum, if there are questions, it's kind of included in the overall presentation. So if you do have any questions regarding the site plan approval, this would be the time to ask those.
I mean, the site plan makes sense to me. There's presumably a holding pond, there's a parking lot, and there's a building.
There's a rain guard.
Looks good.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
From a site plan perspective, that would have been the traffic flow, the landscaping, all of those other components that the planning commission did talk about. So, and the only one I had the question about was the, the additional landscape trees.
All right. Any other questions about this or does anybody want to take a shot at it?
Oh, I'll try it. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with design flexibility with the following conditions and findings for granting flexibility. Conditions for the site plan approval is all engineering comments be addressed, a site security agreement be executed, trash receptacles and a bike rack be provided near the front entrance, an additional two evergreen trees provided along the west property line towards Holly Street and ensuring sight triangles. Screening must be provided around dumpster enclosure. All signage will require separate sign permits. All landscaped areas must be irrigated. As well as the findings for design flexibility that the floor area ratio is approved and it's warranted because the site cannot accommodate the density required to reach a .6 FAR and the 60%, 60% glass requirement. FAR, and the sixty percent glass requirement, the street-level facade between three and eight feet must be sixty percent. The applicant's proposing thirty-three point four, and we're granting that design flexibility because the interior layout of the building and exterior wall planards limit the placement of windows.
Second all of that.
All right. Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Mr. Brody, you happy with all that?
Yes, Your Honor.
All right. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Anything else we can do?
It's a good project.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay. We only got a couple items left.
You're going to talk about the golf fund?
Yeah. All right, our next item on our agenda is item eight, and that is to consider Resolution twenty-one dash ninety, amending the budget for the Golf Course Restaurant. We're looking to approve the purchase of an ice machine at the golf course. The cost to replace the existing ice machine was twelve thousand five hundred forty-two dollars, and one of the two existing ice machines stopped functioning and was deemed non-operational. A new ice machine was needed immediately to maintain service operations at the restaurant, and therefore was purchased before the budget adjustment was made, because capital outlay purchases must specifically be identified and funded per city code. Staff is recommending the budget in the golf fund be amended to purchase the ice machine that we've already purchased. A vote of, a vote of at least four members of the council is required to amend the budget. Does anybody have, Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor Council, yes, is always one of those awkward situations where we needed to purchase something before it was included in the budget. However, our code does require that the item be specifically listed. If this were a ten thousand dollar item, or if, well, less than ten thousand dollar items, actually, we could have just moved ahead per our agreement with Morrissey Hospitality. Obviously, a little over that. This one wasn't a complete surprise. An ice machine was in the original capital replacement plan for the restaurant last year, though, due to impacts related to COVID and other things, we pulled out just about everything from the capital plan, tried to stretch some of those pieces of equipment as long as we could. Had this not broken down this year, it would have been in the capital replacement plan for 2022, so not a complete surprise. And in this case, we didn't quite make it into 2022 and needed to purchase it right away.
Missed it by that much.
We did.
Ms. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion that we authorize Resolution twenty-one dash nine zero, amending the 2021 golf budget for the purchase of an ice machine.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Geisler. Discussion?
Ms. Mayor, I think having ice at the golf course is a really good idea.
And the restaurant.
And the restaurant.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Running to the gas station to get bags of ice.
Not a good idea.
Pretty quick.
Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item nine is to consider adoption of Resolution twenty-one dash ninety-one, approving the 2021 police sergeant's labor agreement.
Mayor Council will take this one as well. So the police sergeant's labor agreement is really always the last one to come before council, and the primary reason for that is much of that agreement is based upon the police officer's labor agreement. So until the police officers can settle, we really can't have discussions with police sergeants, primarily because a lot of the references in the police sergeant's contracts on pay refer to the base rates in the police officer contract. So that's why this one always comes last in the queue. This year, we've had, needed more time to settle these contracts, and maybe we wouldn't a typical year. Most of the changes in this agreement are housekeeping of different sorts, and lining up language between the police sergeant's contract and the police officer contract. When it comes to wages, it's been the city's history to compensate police sergeants at twenty-two percent above top patrol officer pay. That practice remains for this contract. Just as a, as a note, we did increase the police officer rates by two percent, plus a thirty-five cents per hour market increase, and so the police sergeants will get the benefit of that through their twenty-two percent above top patrol. And then I'll stand for any questions that council may have.
Councilmember Demmer?
I just had one on the overtime bullet, said new language stating overtime refused by employees will, for the purposes under provision thirteen point five, be considered as unpaid overtime worked. I didn't fully understand what that meant. Does that mean if we say you have to work overtime, and they say they don't want to, that they still have to, and we just pay them differently? Or what's going on there?
No, Councilmember Demmer, council, what that's referring to is how, who is able to sort of bid on the overtime? And so if you're, if you're offered overtime and you refuse it, those hours will count against you as if you had worked them
Got it.
in terms of prioritization for overtime in the future. So if you're someone who constantly just refuses overtime, we're going to count that against you.
So you can't cherry pick the best overtime?
Exactly, which defends against scenarios where, well, I don't want that one, but I'll take the next one. Well, no, sorry, you're bumped down the list.
All right, makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Rayrower?
Well, I just want to share, I, I support the negotiations and the wage increase. We really, truly want to attract the best police officers here to Coon Rapids. We want the officers here that want to be here, and that believe in community service and relationship building. It's very important to me and to our city, and so I'm in strong support of a good contract for our police department.
You want to make a motion?
Oh. I have to look at it.
Somebody?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
Move adoption of Resolution twenty-one dash ninety-one, approving the labor agreement between the city and the law enforcement labor services, Local three sixty-two, representing the police sergeants, and approve the memorandum of understanding extending the health care savings plan.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are on to item ten, to consider Resolution twenty-one dash eighty-nine, establishing the 2021 to 2022 Coon Rapids Ice Center rental rates and approve the fee structure. I'm going to take the fact that I got no private messages from anybody that we're maybe okay on this one. Mr. Stemwell, let me...
Mayor Council, Stephanie Ring is here, and she could answer any questions that you might have about the structure, but the increases were pretty minimal and follow industry trends toward hourly rates, and we look at our competitors every year and try to stay right in line with where they're at, and certainly that was our approach this year.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Demmer?
One quick question. Is this, so it seems like every year this goes up by five dollars. Should we just interpret that that's the long-term plan? Or is there some, like, we had that big discussion about water, where we finally went, oh, you know what, we're going to have to do something more dramatic than just an increase every year, or, or vice versa. If we keep it flat forever, there's going to be a huge increase down the road. Is this sort of the thing that is sustainable, just kind of go five bucks every year?
Mayor Council, I think it's the, yes, I think it is sustainable. I also think it is matching market ice rates that are out there. So we look at, you know, local ice arenas in Blaine, and over Anoka and so forth, and this kind of puts us more in that middle of the pack with some of those rates. And would be very typical, actually, of ice rates across the metropolitan area. There have been some years, and I can't name them off the top of my head, where some of the ice, maybe it was non-prime, maybe it was the prime ice, didn't increase by that five dollars, but I would say it has been pretty typical for it to increase about five dollars. And we try to do it in round increments instead of, you know, two seventeen, fifty-nine, just to keep it simple. And maybe one year you hold it down to two fifteen, and the next year you pop it up to two twenty. So it's really looking at those factors, obviously trying to build in some of the inflationary costs that we have at the ice center, whether it be personnel or energy, and kind of making it competitive in the region.
Okay. And personally, I would definitely support the predictable increase over the one year suddenly it has to go up thirty bucks, so.
That's really unlikely.
Okay.
Unless everybody just goes up thirty bucks for some reason we don't understand yet.
Sounds good.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
To Ms. Ring, you know, if you can talk about, you know, so the different users of the ice, so it's what, our high school, the Blue Ox, skating clubs?
Yeah, we have a very busy facility. We do have Coon Rapids youth hockey, we have Blue Ox, we also have sled hockey, we have public skate, so the facility is quite busy. So, in fact, we're starting the season full force right now, so we have a lot of users, and so this ice time is based upon, as Matt mentioned, competitive fees, puts us kind of in the middle, and again, those operational costs have to be looked at.
Thank you. So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-one dash eighty-nine, establishing the 2021, 2022 ice rental rates for the Coon Rapids Ice Center, and approve the 2021, 2022 Coon Rapids Ice Center fee structure.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And then I imagine to reflect that in the new contracts, we have to do item eleven, consider approval of the 2021 and 2022 Ice Center user contracts. We have agreements here between the city and Anoka Henepin Independent School District Number Eleven, Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association, the Minnesota Blue Ox, and Power Edge are submitted for our consideration.
Hi, Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
Seems like a continuation of the other one, so I would move to approve the proposed 2021, 2022 Coon Rapids Ice Center annual user contracts with Anoka Henepin Independent School District Eleven, Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association, the Minnesota Blue Ox, and Power Edge, and authorize city officials to execute accordingly.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Rayrower, a little extra inflection.
Power Edge.
Power Edge.
Sound awesome.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are up to the open-mic public comment. Is anybody here to address council this evening on open mic? Anybody here for open mic this evening? All right, come on up and state your name and your address, and you've got three minutes to discuss anything that's not on the agenda tonight. Chair Schwartz, how are you?
Just fine, Mr. Mayor. Wayne Schwartz, eight-six-five hundred and fourth Avenue, Coon Rapids. And I'm coming here tonight as a citizen, not as part of the planning commission. I don't know if it's possible, if it's ever been done, but I would think the city should give some serious thought to reconsidering the site plan for the Riverdale Station Apartments that was just recently approved for phases three and four. I believe Sherman Associates just out and out lied to the city as far as the ability of the parking structure or situation. The existing buildings from phase one and two, they stated had adequate parking. Within the last two weeks, six evenings, I randomly went and checked the parking lot and the park and ride lot, and there were anywhere from fifty to a hundred cars parked in the park and ride lot every time I checked, six times out of the two weeks. Those cars obviously are, when they're sitting there at nine, ten, eleven o'clock at night, there's no buses running, there's no trains running, they're obviously there for the apartments. And I just believe the parking that's not included, or not available for the new buildings that are coming in, there's no place for them to have overflow parking. And if the Metro Transit was to ever say, you can't use our park and ride lot after hours, I don't know where those fifty to a hundred cars are going to go. So I don't know if there's a procedure to review or revisit the plans that were recently approved, but I think it's something that should be looked into.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to address council for open mic this evening? Seeing none, we will close that portion of the meeting. I have no reports on previous open mics, and we are up to other business. Got a few things going on. We got the military softball tournament coming up this weekend, so their big opening ceremony will be Friday night, the tenth, but I don't know what time. Do you?
That one escapes me, can look it up quick.
Okay. I know, it's a pretty big deal, though. And then on Saturday, we have our September eleventh memorial. I'll bet you Captain Stanky would have all the information on that.
Mayor Council, Captain Stinky would love to give you an update on that.
Mayor Council, I do have information on the twentieth anniversary, nine-eleven ceremony, thank you. We have exciting scheduled events occurring this Saturday, beginning at noon, with a meet and greet of EMS personnel, as well as military personnel from different branches of the military. We'll have emergency vehicles on-site and military vehicles. I'll also have artifacts recovered from the World Trade Center wreckage, and I believe a fire truck as well, that was, that it was recovered from the wreckage. At two PM, the actual ceremony begins, and that will consist of military flyovers, and we'll have several guest speakers attending the event. A couple of those are citizens who lost family members in the World Trade Center. We'll also have fireworks, a twenty-one gun salute, and music during that event. The event itself will conclude at three PM with a military and emergency vehicle procession that will proceed from the Coon Rapids High School to Coon Rapids Fire Station One, where the recovered steel I-beam from the World Trade Center wreckage is on permanent display. We do invite the public to come out and join us, it's a free event, and those who can't make it to the high school, and they like, they like to view the emergency procession of vehicles, could take a seat anywhere along Robinson Drive, and they'd have a great front row seat for that, so. I'd just like to invite everybody to come out and join us. It's, we had an exciting event, a big turnout for the tenth anniversary, and we're expecting the same for the twentieth anniversary. Thank you.
I never thought about the, the actual, if you can't make it to the event, to set up along Robinson Drive, that is, that'll be kind of like a little mini parade without the candy, but, yes.
Ms. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
And just to clarify, at the high school, it's at the football field, not in the high school, correct?
Councilmember Geisler, that is correct. It will be on the, the new Astroturf football field. And, you know, we partnered with the high school on this, we're excited, excited to have it there on their new field, and we promised them, we'll be careful not to wreck the new field.
We're not bringing any tanks out there or anything.
No, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Johnson?
So as I understand it, just so the public knows, the ceremony begins at two PM, so if you want to be there, try to get there a little bit early for it, if you want to catch the ceremony and then the flyover that's going to happen, I believe is at two forty-five PM, and that's going to be some P-51 Mustangs. I saw the article in the paper, and I pulled it up here, just to confirm that my memory was right, but it caught my attention because one of the keynote speakers at, at the ceremony is going to be Eric Ameth. And Eric is the younger brother of Gordy Ameth, who died in the World Trade Center and was a classmate of mine, and, and a good friend. And I have very fond memories of Gordy when he was younger. I think it's important that the community see if they can turn out for this. I think it'll be a good event. I, I will say that it's touching to me every year to see Gordy's name. It's, his last name is spelled double A-M-O-T-H. So at the nine-eleven memorial in New York, his is the first name that is, is read every year, because it's alphabetical. So, anybody and everybody who can come out from Coon Rapids, I'd like to encourage you to do so, I think you'll enjoy it. Thank you.
All right. And then the other thing I'm going to mention, because we don't have another council meeting before then, is Saturday, September eighteenth, Coon Rapids Love My Pet Fair, it's ten to two, down at the Riverview Park. There will be canine demonstration... There will be canine demonstrations and different demonstrations and rabies clinics and anything else. Ms. Lenz, you're doing a lot of nodding. I'll bet you got the skinny.
That is very correct, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for letting everybody know. Come on out and see us, it'll be fun.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
There's also, and maybe Mr. Hammer, I don't know if you want to add, the public meeting is this Thursday, the 9th, about the Pleasure Creek South Filter Project. That's to, to look at how we're going to reduce pollutants, pollutants from the Pleasure Creek. And it's a virtual meeting, so you can check our website and if you want to attend that, learn more, that's on Thursday.
Yep, and they would like you to RSVP because it will send out a meeting link for that at 6:00.
And of course, we always have farmer's market on Wednesday, so.
All right. Councilmember Demmer?
Just a reminder that school is now back in session. Change your traffic patterns to accommodate, watch out for school buses. It's been a while since we've had everybody in school, but that's the, the current situation. So, just be careful and, and go back to driving the way you drove a few years ago, not the way you've learned to drive in the last few years.
All right. Anything else? Mr. Stemwell, anything else?
I think we touched all the bases, yeah.
All right. Any other business to come before council this evening?
Move adjourned. Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Carlson to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.[1782.51]